I'd like to welcome everybody to the Municipal Planning Commission meeting of July 12th. The Municipal Planning Commission is conducting this meeting in person and via conference call in accordance with Municipal Government Act, Section 199. Council chambers is now open for public attendance in person, however, members may still join meetings remotely using our current teleconferences process. As per Wheatland County Policy 17.13, members of the public are not permitted to speak unless the commission agrees to hear from them. If the commission agrees to allow the public to speak, the Chair will call upon specific individuals at that time. Please note that this call is being recorded and will be uploaded to our website or social media. For any individuals using the conference call line, we ask that you mute your phone to eliminate background noise. Everyone has a right to be present at Municipal Planning Commission meetings. At any attendees that are considered disrupted to the progression of this meeting may be removed at the discretion of the Chair as per Municipal Government Act, Section 198. We thank you for your cooperation and understanding. We have an agenda in front of us. Are there any additions?
I'll move approval if there's no additions as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Link. All in favor? That is passed. We've got a copy of the unapproved minutes from June 14th, 2022. Any corrections? Commission's wishes?
I'll move the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Kestner. All in favor? That is passed. That moves us on to development permit applications. Thank you, Suzanne.
Good morning, I'm Suzanne Hayes, Development Officer with Wheatline County. I will be presenting all five of the development permit applications this morning. The first one we have before us is DP 2022-110 for a dwelling manufactured two. The location plan is on page 17 of the agenda package. And you can see that it is approximately 4.5 miles northeast of Carsland. On the same page, we have the circulation map. We circulated to adjacent landowners within one mile of the application. We did not circulate to any agencies. Our internal circulation was to Park Enterprises. Our Building Safety Codes Officer did provide a comment saying because of the structural uncertainty of the unit, a certified structural engineer would have to verify the unit prior to moving. The circulation to adjacent landowners, we didn't get responses from adjacent landowners, however, we do have two written responses from the applicant and the applicant's parents, father-in-law. So please let me know if you would like those read out loud. They were included in the agenda package that was posted to the website.
I assume everybody's read the agenda package, so I do not believe we need to read those out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So on page 18 of the agenda package, we have the site plan and aerial photos. The application is to move a 50 by 27-foot manufactured dwelling without CSA A277 certification, constructed in 1988 from Dalborne, Alberta, to a 5.53-acre parcel within Wheatland County. So due to a recent amendment, we just have some aerial photos on page 19 as well, due to a recent amendment, the application or the Land Use Bylaw provides two categories of manufactured dwellings based on the CSA standard, which was applicable when the manufactured dwelling was constructed at the factory. So the A277 standard typically applies to dwellings constructed from 1992 to present. Since the dwelling did not meet the A277 requirement, the application falls within the category of a dwelling manufactured type two. The Land Use Bylaw has specific submission requirements put in place so that the development authority can determine if an older manufactured dwelling is structurally sound and suitable for relocation to Wheatline County. So the submission requirements in Section 8.10.7 say that a pre-application inspection report that is prepared by a registered engineer or a safety codes officer at the expense of the applicant must be provided. The pre-application inspection report must identify the dwelling's structural integrity and suitability to be relocated into the county, providing recommendations on the dwelling's overall condition and any updates or renovations that must be made, and color photographs of all sides of the dwelling. The report which was submitted by the applicant did not meet that Land Use Bylaw requirement as it was prepared by a home inspector rather than a safety codes officer or a structural engineer. In an attempt to avoid the applicant having to have another report completed but still meet the Land Use Bylaw requirements, a building safety codes officer from Park Enterprises agreed to review the report at no additional charge to the applicant. What's the difference between a home inspector and a safety codes officer? The home inspectors are not code inspectors. They check if things are working such as outlets and appliances and make comments on the condition of a dwelling, but do not have the authority to determine if something meets code, and they will not open walls or roofs, but will comment on what is visible. A home inspector gets a license from Service Alberta. A safety codes officer are code inspectors and are required to comment on whether the building meets the applicable code as the building code. They will not open walls or roofs, but will comment on what is visible. However, a safety code officer, if he suspects structural issues, he has the option and the authority to stipulate that a structural engineer inspected dwelling and provide a report. A home inspector does not have that authority. The Safety Codes Council of Alberta certifies as COs. More complete definitions are on page nine of the agenda package if you'd like to read them. Some of the items identified in the report are found on pages 10 and 11 with accompanying photos beginning on page 19. The comments included in the report are relative to the stability of the home. The report also includes comments on electrical, heating, insulation, plumbing, and interior, however, I did not provide those in the report. The home inspection identified visible areas in poor condition and what the potential implications could be. With regards to roofing, the condition was cupping, curling, and clawing of the shingles. The chances, there could be a chance of water damage to the structure, finishes, and contents. The exterior roof drainage and gutters, they were missing, or there was a poor water management system. The implication was there was a chance of water damage to the structure, finishes, and contents. Wall soffits in the underside of eaves and fascia, the condition was damaged. Again, implications, chance of water damage to structure, finishes, and contents. The walls and trim needed paint or stain, chance of water damage again. The metal siding was buckled or wavy, loose or missing pieces with the same implications. And when it came to the roof framing sheathing, the roof slash attic, the condition was, I guess, visibly rot, and the implication was weakened structure, chance of structural movement. So as mentioned, we asked park inspections if they could review the report and provide their opinion on what was seen by the home inspectors. So their comment was, after reviewing the inspection report, it was the opinion of the building safety codes officer that this mobile unit is not in good enough shape to be relocated to Wheatline County. And he further stated that he could only comment on what he saw in the photos and what the home inspector wrote. And then again, he did, I circulated him for this comments for this report, and he said, in response to being circulated, he added that because of the structural uncertainty of the unit, a certified structural engineer would have to verify the unit prior to moving it. So in conclusion, the submission requirements of the Land Use Bylaw have been put in place to provide sufficient information for staff to make a recommendation and to allow the development authority, MPC, to make an informed decision on two aspects. Is the dwelling suitable and structurally stable enough to withstand the move and be relocated into Wheatline County? If not, then the application may be refused as per the Land Use Bylaw, Section 8.10.1, which says the development authority reserves the right to refuse a development permit for a manufactured dwelling that is of poor appearance or conditions. Section 8.10 of the Land Use Bylaw is intended to provide an opportunity for older or remodeled home applications to be reviewed and considered to be relocated to Wheatline County, but it is not a guarantee that after an inspection is provided at the owner's cost, they will receive a recommendation that the unit is suitable for relocation. If the structure is found to be stable and suitable for the move, the inspection report assists in identifying deficiencies that can be mitigated and addressed in the development permit conditions. A condition would also be added to require that a financial security be taken until the upgrades specified in the conditions have been completed. So staff's recommendation, which is found on page 12, is that MPC refuse DP 2022-110 for a dwelling manufactured type two for the following reasons. The inspection report provided by the applicant is not in accordance with the Land Use Bylaw requirements. Based on basic information provided in the home inspection report, the safety codes officer is recommending that because of the structural uncertainty of the unit, a certified structural engineer would have to verify the unit prior to moving. The development authority is unable to draft conditions as the county did not receive an inspection report with recommendations prepared by a safety codes officer or an engineer as per the Land Use Bylaw that would have addressed recommended renovations and upgrades to address the deficiencies, or how the structural integrity of the mobile home may be impacted when relocating the unit, and can this be mitigated. On page 15, MPC has their standard three response options to consider, and that concludes my recommendation. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Suzanne. MPC's wishes?
Just a question for clarification. So they had a home inspector do the work, and then our safety codes officer provided a no-charge opinion?
That is correct, yes.
Just making sure.
Yes, Commissioner Larsson?
I'll move that MPC refuse DP 2022-110 for a dwelling manufactured two for the following reasons, one through three.
Thank you. Discussions?
Yeah, just a comment. I understand after reading the letters, the letters, that they, what they're trying to do, but if safety codes says not movable, it's, it's, would be hard for us to accept this. And as much as I want them in our, in my area, it doesn't look like this is the way to go about it.
Can I ask a question? So if this gets refused, are they able to reapply if they can get somebody to say that it's structurally sound?
Yes, the Land Use Bylaw stipulates they can reapply after, I believe it's 12 months, maybe six. It's six months, okay. After six months. So that's an option, I guess. Another option is they can appeal the decision, or another option, maybe that MPC could defer their decision until we get a structural engineer's report, or the safety code officer has not even said that he will review this now. He says it needs to be a structural engineer. So that's the type of report that we'd have to get. So they do have those options.
I wonder if we should defer it. I mean, I don't know. I think the intent of our bylaw is to not allow sort of, I hate to say, junky dwellings in places, but this is temporary, and it's not in a hamlet or somewhere where you have neighbors next door looking at it. It's meant to be just until they build a house.
Yes.
But I would say it does need to have that structural engineering report.
Yes, Council, Commissioner Kestner?
I have a question. Person has an application in for this specific building. They can't look at another building next week, they can apply, right? A different building, but a same type of application.
The Land Use Bylaw says that if it's the same or a similar type of application on the same parcel, it has to wait that 12 months.
Six months?
Oh, sorry, six months.
Can you just, sorry?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you just speak to like our responsibility or liability for the actual move process? And like, that is, I think, part of the rationale for sure is we do, like, we don't want to contribute to like a deterioration of the aesthetic of the county, but we did want to open up more housing options, and we knew that, like, there are, at times it's hard to find, like, a trailer with, or not, a mobile home with a sticker that's, was required under the Land Use Bylaw. But I'm just trying to clarify exactly what our responsibilities are in terms of like actual safety, the liability. I know in one of the letters, there was like a proposal for the inspection to be post-move, but do we have a responsibility if there is, like, say there's an issue in transit and we have approved it to be moved? Is there, is that legislated? Do we have liability? Where does that sort of stem from, just for my understanding?
To the Chair, to Municipal Planning Commission, I'm not sure about the liability for giving permission to move it. The concern for older mobile homes is under the provincial things with A277 CSA certification. The province of Alberta only recognizes that as it's certified in the factory to meet the Alberta, not in the National Building Code, and there's a, through that process of manufacturing. These older mobile homes are no longer accepted by Alberta for that reason, is they can't certify that they meet the Alberta Building Code for energy, electrical, wiring, plumbing. So that was one way it was handled at that. Through the history here at Wheatline County, they went through with the, there was another, I think it's the A240, 270, 40?
The Z240 was the old code, yeah.
And even, those are also no longer accepted by the province. So in order to allow the older renovated mobile homes, the only option we had, which we brought through with the Land Use Bylaw amendments, was through the options that we gave, that we have a safety code officer or a structural engineer. But it still does not guarantee it meets the Alberta Building Code. All it's saying is that it's structurally sound, and for the integrity to move it into, relocate it into the county. And then the, the next step is the applicant still has to apply for a building permit to move the mobile home, plumbing, septic, electrical. So they still have other permits, but the, when they go to inspect the home to move it, it would not be other than the visual, once it's on the location, but they wouldn't be able to look in the wall. So it's, I'm not sure about liability, or if it becomes the homeowner who brought the unit to the house, to the site and insured it themselves.
Commissioner Kestner?
Yes, in the past, we recognized this CSA, A277 as our thing, and it was brought up that some of the older mobile homes have been well-cared-for over the years, and they were renovated, and I don't think this one meets that for me. So having heard what our conditions are, I would be more in favor of deferring this if they were to get a different. I'm thinking time to get all the inspection reports, it'd be way cheaper to find a different thing to move. And if they do find something, I would like to leave it open for them to reapply next month or two months. I'd hate to see, as Commissioner Biggers said, it's a young family, and they're wanting to build, yeah, but I want to make sure places sound and safe to live in, and, and then, yeah, I don't want that trailer to be sitting around in the county for the next 10 years.
To the Chair?
Yes.
I just want to also just make sure that everybody is clear that if they do get a structural engineer's report, it still could come back with a recommendation that it not be moved. Just so everybody knows, that doesn't mean that it's going to be approved. So there's, again, the risk.
So question, so if we defer this, because I agree with Commissioner Kestner, if we defer this, and they were to say, get an engineering report, the engineering report fails, could, under that deferral, could they bring in through another unit? Like, could they bring another, like, a structurally sound, one that we don't have any issues with, could that still be done? I'm just, like, because if we, we say no to this, that one year, I, you know, I would like to work with these people as much as possible, but I still want to stay within, within where the law is. So I'm just wondering if, I'm not sure this is the right unit. In fact, I'm pretty sure it's the wrong unit, but if they have a, can come up with another unit that they can still, you know, because they're going to need something, winters are tough in this country, so being in a tent trailer ain't going to be, ain't going to cut it.
I agree that that could be the situation, whereas if you don't refuse it, if you just defer the decision and they withdraw their application, then they don't have to abide by that six-month rule. They could come back with another, but they'll have to get a report again.
Yeah. Commissioner Larsson?
Yeah, I like the deferral idea because it gives some more, more options to provide a different solution. Some of the things on here that I have, because I've owned one of these before I moved it, I know that if you hire a mover and they don't think it's safe, they're not going to do it. So I don't know if a structural engineer, I see what the need is, but the building mover himself will not pick something up that will fall off their trailer because they are responsible for it as soon as it's on their truck, their insurance covers it to a certain extent. If it falls off on the road, I don't think you're going to get much for it, because it has happened. I've seen it in Rocky View, there was one that fell through a bridge. But it, so there's different layers of this, too. When I look at the roof and the fascia and the siding, that's of no concern to me, because I do know when you move these down the road at highway speed, I've seen it, shingles fly off, lots of them and stuff, and that's, we probably be, it wouldn't make sense for someone to shingle it and side it before they move it, because if I was doing it, I'd say, it's going to fall off anyways, I'm going to do it when it gets there. So there's just different things that I see here that how it works. But if, if the mover would consider a deferral, I think that would be something that we
So will Commissioner Larsson accept a deferral as opposed to the motion that was passed?
We haven't passed it.
No, we haven't, we haven't passed it.
We haven't passed it.
Yeah, yeah, that has been discussed. Will you pull your motion off the floor so that a deferral can be?
I guess what I would like is a little bit of clarification on the deferral, because I, just looking at the pictures, and I'm not a structural engineer, but there's no way that this thing should be allowed in here, but if we defer it, then they can find something different? If we defer it, we're saying not this particular unit, but perhaps another unit?
If we defer it, we're saying, we're not saying yes, and we're not saying no. We're saying we're, if they get a structural engineer report and come back, then we have enough information to make a decision. But in the meantime, they may choose not to do that and just say, no, we're just withdrawing our application. We'll look for something else. That's their, their choice.
So as, as long as we would get an engineered report before this thing gets moved, then I would be amenable to deferring this.
Thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor. I believe there's been enough discussion, so we will have a vote on whether or not we agree to defer this. All in favor? Oh, sorry.
I just want to make it clear that we'll defer this subject to a structural engineering report on that building.
Right.
Just so that everybody's clear on what we're voting on.
Yeah, or alternatives, like if they did choose to withdraw this application and apply for another structure, or it just leaves their options open, is why. I really support this option just because, given the situation, and it gives them opportunities either to provide the necessary report that's been requested. Should the deferral, just because our Land Use Bylaw states safety codes or structural engineers, should the deferral indicate that if this were to come back to MPC for consideration, we would require the structural engineering report that was recommended or requested by our safety codes? Like, I think that should maybe be specified in the motion, just because if you went by the Land Use Bylaw, and if they brought, like, I just, I want this to be most efficient for them, and as clear as possible, and then also for it to be clear that they have the option to look at another structure still on that site, and that we're trying to mitigate, like, that time lag if this is lost.
I think that would be good to specify in the motion, because it would be, it would just be another time and money waster to go to a safety code officer who might say, you need a structural engineer report. We kind of have a very good indication that that's the way it would go.
Accept an amendment?
Craft something that we can look at, I think would be probably best in this situation. That's just my own opinion.
Maybe just take five?
Sorry?
Do you want to take five?
Can we, can we take five minutes here just to get this sort of, so we get it right? Thank you.
Thanks.
Come on.
To unmute yourself, press the star key twice.
I don't think he was ever read. I was really pushing to do this.
Mute off. You have been muted. To unmute yourself, press the star key twice.
Perfect, we have, we have the, we have the new motion in front of us.
Can I suggest it be read out, because there's probably people listening on the line?
Right.
On your screen in front of you, Rick, if it's easier to see.
The proposed motion says that DP 2022-110 be tabled pending submission of an inspection report prepared by a certified structural engineer confirming the dwelling's structural integrity and suitability to be relocated into the county. The report must include recommendations on the dwelling's overall condition and any updates or renovations that must be made.
Thank you. Commissioner Kestner?
So the applicant sees this, they say, talks to you about it, and this is going to be burdensome, they could withdraw their application and submit another one for a different unit?
Yes, because a decision hasn't been made.
Okay. So you'll have that talk with them when, when they come in?
Correct.
Okay. I'm good with it then.
We have a, a new motion in front of us. Is there any discussion on the new motion? Yes, Council, Commissioner Larsson?
Just a question, Stephen, should we say professional as opposed to certified engineer?
To the Chair, yes, that works.
Is there any more discussion? If not, I'll call the vote. All in favor? That is passed. Thank you very much for that report. It was, it was, I believe it goes above and beyond. It answered all my questions. Thank you. We will now move on to DP 2022-118.
This application is for a variance to the prohibited... This application is for a variance to the prohibited sign section of the land use by law. The location plan is on page 35 of the agenda package. It is located half a mile east of Strathmore, on the south side of Highway 1, adjacent to the eastbound lane. On the same page, you will find the circulation map, which was circulated to a radius of one mile. No responses were received from neighbors, from agencies, just to say that after the previous permit was approved, AT approved a permit for the signage. And we also received an updated, or a response from the town of Strathmore saying they had no comments or concerns. Internal staff did have a comment. Economic Development said Wheatland County has plans to place gateway signage on major transportation routes, including Highway 1. This will occur in phases over the next several years with the signage committee deciding on exact locations. Highway 1 locations are considered to be part of Tier 1. No concerns on this proposal as long as it doesn't start a trend and clutter the Highway 1 corridor with signage. On page 30, yes, 36 of the agenda package, we have the site plan and aerial photos. So in June of 2021, MPC granted a temporary approval for a one-year term, allowing the prohibited sign to be displayed on the 16-meter freight trailer. The temporary permit allowed the applicant time to obtain an alternate sign or to reapply for a variance after one year's time. And we were pending approval from Alberta Transportation. So this variance has been requested to allow the prohibited sign to be placed adjacent to the eastbound lanes on the south side of the highway, 0.8 kilometers east of Strathmore. And there are some photos of the sign on pages 37 and 38. The eastbound lane, they have blank right at this point. They may consider adding signage later on. And then the westbound lane, you can see the advertisement for the Strathmore camp, Ag campground. So the, the recommendation from staff is on page 31 and 32. And it is that MPC refused DP 2022-118 for a vehicle sign requiring a variance of the prohibited signs section for the following reasons. Allowing this vehicle sign may set a precedent for others to apply for similar types of signs. The speed limit is 110 kilometers per hour and the sign may provide a distraction to motorists attempting to read the details. Historically, Wheatland County has enforced through the complaint process other similar signs placed on equipment and required the signs to be removed. An approval of the sign may cause highway friendage or the gateway into Wheatland County to look less appealing and may detract from the desired county image and aesthetics. So the standard three options are on page 33 of the agenda package. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. MPC's wishes.
A question.
Okay.
You said this was applied for last year and was given a one-year temporary thing so they could relocate?
So they could either get a different type of sign that isn't prohibited or just, and then we were waiting to see if Alberta Transportation would approve it. So we kind of allowed them that time. And then now they're reapplying and they would like it to be permanent.
Commissioner Clausen.
Kind of putting it as refusing it and that would be a reason you had a year to, to relocate or come up. Because we did give you a year, but that would make it cumbersome? Or would that be a, a good idea, I ask you, Commissioner? Because they did have a year to come into compliance. Nothing's changed.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, that's. Commissioner Clausen, did you have?
Yes, looking at this, and I remember supporting this originally going in, but looking with the, the applicant put this in during trying times, I would say. So I would, I would maybe support a two-year extension if it's, if at all possible with the same site. And that gives them some time to see if there's any return on investment with this because I don't, like, I drive this quite often and I don't think it showed up for like six months after the application. Spring it showed up. I could be wrong. But to see if they have, if it fits their needs and maybe they can come up with a budget and stuff to replace and with a permanent sign, to have it taken out right now, I think they haven't had any chance to see if it actually pays off. Because we did have hardly anything going on in two years' time. So I don't know if that's at all possible to, do we have that power to?
Yes, staff has prepared some conditions if you had decided to approve it, but it's not for another temporary permit. We can add that condition. I can show you the conditions I have prepared, which are just basically this development permit is approved solely for the purpose of a sign affixed to a freight trailer and a variance to the prohibited signs section of the land use by law. Development shall proceed according to Ag general requirements and must comply with all applicable provisions and no permanent development on or over any utility right-of-way easement. So those are the basic conditions. If you wanted to add one for a temporary permit, we could do that.
My intention was to try to encourage them to have a timeline to replace it with a permanent structure, just to get rid of the trailer thing. If.
Commissioner Laprise.
That's just my idea.
I just wanted to ask about all the other signage on fake tray, freight trailers that I see. I just drove from the West Edge home yesterday and counted probably 20. So are they all temporary or? And most of them actually don't look terrible. I, I don't know if people would agree or not. Some, some of the other signs that I see in the ditch are way worse because they're less, they're, they get damaged by wind and things like that. So they're half-falling down or they're, the paint is peeling off of them or, you know. The ones that I've seen, to me, don't look terrible.
Through the chair, there are a number of signs and there is a variety of reasons why they are there. So some of them, perhaps, we haven't received a complaint on. Some have been removed, some are within the Strathmore town limits, and some we have tried to enforce in the past and they were allowed to remain. So there is a variety of reasons for all of the signs. Some are there just, we haven't received a complaint.
It doesn't really seem fair to me that we would disallow one and the others just because they haven't been complained about. Get to stay. That sounds weird to me.
So to administration, following up on Commissioner Clausen's, can we, I would like to, I, I think, as I remember the conversation that we had last year about this, was that it was sort of a, trying to figure out if there was any bang for the buck to go permanent, like if this was actually being noticed and that kind of stuff. Is there any way we can do this for another year? So have we revisited a year from now and then they come forward with a plan to, to replace the sign with, with permanent signage? Just my, my thoughts.
We could add a condition that says this, this permit is issued for the period of 12 months with the condition that they come back with a permanent sign or it has to be removed. Like, no more temporary signage permits will be issued or something like that.
And I would be good with that because it'll be, like I said, I don't remember when this came, but it was, it's not been up for a full year. It took them some time to get this, to get that sign up there, so. Yes.
And not only that, I think Alberta Transportation is way behind in getting approval on signage as permanent signs, it would have heard. Well, a year would be. I think a year would be necessary even if we took it down.
Yes, Commissioner Kestner.
I think in the past, Alberta's transportation's approval was contingent on Wheatland County's approval.
We used to actually have it reversed. We would say, if AT approves it, then you can come to us. But on this particular one, they reversed it and said, if, if the county approves it, then, so it was a bit of a different than usual.
I guess too, for me, it's, it's a half a mile outside of Strathmore's boundary. And Strathmore has, has their signage up and it's, that's what they want. Going to make comment on our signage, but that, there is a place for signage.
Right.
Right, and, and it's just a half a mile out in the county. We don't really have a kind of, I guess, conditions for signage as, as that, so. Does it fit into the landscape when it's half a mile, it's this? And then get into county and it's way different. I, I can give them a year again, but still I'm not in favor of it. What's there, for sure. Especially so close to Strathmore's boundary and they are advertising for something that is within the town. They're not advertising too much spray for your crops or anything. It's, it's something that is within Strathmore town limits. I think that would be more appropriate to me.
I wonder if we gave them a year, then if we could approach all of the trailer signs that are in our jurisdiction and have a similar requirement? I mean, it just, it just doesn't seem fair to me to have others that are allowed and this, this one isn't. I just think it should be universal. Is there a way of, in the next year, sending out notices to those who have them and saying, we're, we're addressing this and want everybody to be in compliance?
Yes, Commissioner Clausen.
So we, the trailer signs, I think we've had this discussion in previous council. But all you have to do is when you're driving in Edmonton, next time have a look, they're everywhere. And I mean, it'd be, I think it'd be a provincial approach on some of this stuff on their, on their primary highways. If they had a standard, would help out a lot.
Right.
Because it's up to individual counties. But that's just my opinion. The, the, as far as distraction goes, along that same line of thought, you can drive the number two again. And there's digital signs that are very distracting. They have different flashing things on it and different, that are, as far as this is visually, it doesn't really distract your attention. And Strathmore does have, I think it's two bill, two or three billboards on the way coming in from eastbound or into Strathmore that are for rent for that purpose. And I think there's one towards, one or two towards Calgary too, in, within the town limits. So, I mean, are we discouraging people renting those signs for that purpose? Or maybe someone wants to put a digital sign up that can change stuff and charge people? I mean, there's a whole industry involved in that. I would, I will support a one-year extension on this and I think it's a great discussion. But it's, I think it's, it's a can of worms really.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Link.
Yeah, I would support the one-year extension as well. I agree with Commissioner Kestner's comments around just like signage that's applicable to the county versus not. However, I do support that this applicant is like deeply connected to like the rural way of life and our culture and that type of thing, which does distinguish it. And I know we primarily look at like form, not use. So that's balanced with my concern. I do think that as a rural municipality, we have a different aesthetic than an urban municipality does. So I recall in Foothills County, they were banning like the roadside vehicle signs and I, I know it went to court, I believe. The appeal court upheld the county's jurisdiction to do that, even though it had been litigated against. And it is because of that aesthetic. And one of the things that I think is attractive about Wheatland County is our landscapes and just sort of that, the delineation between what you see in an urban setting and what we see in a rural setting. And so I do feel a responsibility to kind of uphold that. To Commissioner Laprise's comments, that's always been a challenging one for us because it, at times it feels like it's harder for somebody who's trying to do the right thing than somebody who is simply not applying. The reason, and it took me a long time to fully grasp this. I think I might not be the only one at the time, but we do do things on a complaints basis. The rationale and administration can correct me if I'm wrong, but the rationale, I believe, is a lot around capacity. We don't necessarily have capacity to enforce our entire land use by law. And so in order to not be accused of being discriminatory or sort of that type of argument, we do respond on a complaints basis. And that way, at least we're consistent. Like, there is that consistency in that we do respond to complaints and enforce based on that. But we simply don't have capacity to enforce all of our bylaws at all times, all throughout the county, just because of how like massive we are. And then it does come down to, you'd referenced earlier, like there's areas of the county where it really doesn't impact anybody if you're not quite in compliance with an element of it. And that's another rationale for using that complaints base because if there is a contravention of the bylaw that's impacting somebody, to me, it makes sense to put the limited resources to where it's impacting. So I don't know if I could support like approaching all of the signs just because then even if we missed one or like just because they're so, we're so large. But I am confident that if we received complaints about other vehicle signs, they would be enforced. I wouldn't mind hearing more about the ones that, like, we tried enforcement, but that it, if you can clarify that. But that's just some thoughts around like, I do, I fully support the idea of giving the one-year extension and give some time to apply for a permanent sign. But I also just want to be mindful of the landscape and our aesthetic and it, like, our big prairie skies are, I know it sounds cliche, but that's a huge feature of Wheatland County, so.
Just through the chair, in our previous bylaw, the, one of the rules was no sign would be allowed within 300 meters of the highway without Alberta Transportation approval first. And in this bylaw, we actually added certain signs that are prohibited. So we would have the authority to, to enforce them without Alberta Transportation. And so that's why we added the freight trailer one to the prohibited signs, so.
Yes, Commissioner Clausen.
I'll make the motion that MPC approved DP 22-118 for a vehicle sign with a variance to prohibited signs section with the land use by law 7.18.15H, subject to the following conditions, one through four. If you want me to read them, I'm glad they're on the screen. I can read them then. The, number one, this development permit is approved solely for the purpose of a sign affixed to a freight trailer and a variance to the prohibited signs sections, 7.18.15H of the land use by law defined as vehicle sign with a variance. Number two, development shall proceed according to the Ag general district requirements of the, and the applicant must comply with all applicable provisions of the Wheatland County land use by law. Number three, no permanent development shall occur on or over any utility right-of-way or easement. Number four, permit to do, to be issued for a one-year term to allow for the applicant adequate, adequate time to procure a sign which is allowable under the land use by law. No further temporary permits will be considered.
Thank you, Commissioner Clausen. Discussion. I would like to see administration have conversations with the Ags because I can imagine going, looking down the road that if they develop that piece of property that we have talked about and they've, that this would be a great way to announce what's up and coming. So it's, it's not going to be like, it'll, it'll have to be some sort of a, a sign that you can change the, like, whether it's a digital sign or whatever, and, and sort of get the feeling on what, on which way they're going. And, and at that point, they might decide that they want to move this sign into the, into the town limits, you know, just, just to find a location that, or it might be, and it might be there and it might be a, a very expensive kind of sign, so. But I, I would like, I think we should have that conversation with them just to see where, what they're, like, is this going to, is the sign that is there right now, is that going to sort of feed into the, into the Ag society's arena idea? So just so that we sort of understand what's. So just so that we sort of understand what we may or may not be getting ourselves into. Any more discussion? If not, I'll call the vote. All in favor? That is passed. We will now move on to DP 2022-124.
This application is for a variance for an existing shed. The location plan is on page 43 of the agenda package and it is located about eight miles north of Hazar. The circulation map is on the same page. We circulated to landowners within one mile with no responses. We didn't perform an agency circulation. Staff had no concerns. On page 44, we have the real property report, which was submitted along with an aerial photo showing the location of the shed. So the compliance was requested and the review identified four accessory buildings, which didn't have permits. Three of them met the setbacks and one did not, being 2.41 meters from the west sideyard property line. And the setback is 3.05 meters. So it's an 11.1% variance. So needed to come to MPC. The neighboring parcel of land is adjacent to the west property line is 158 acres. It's an ag parcel with grain bins located approximately 14 meters from the property boundary. There's an internal road constructed to access the grain bins, so that separates the bins from the property line as well. So to obtain a compliance status, a development permit must be obtained for all of the structures with a variance for the shed that doesn't meet the setback. So on page 45, we have just a photo of the shed looking west towards the grain bins on the adjacent lot. Some considerations, the proposal does meet the criteria listed in the LUB regarding variances as it should not have a negative impact on surrounding landowners. There were no objections from the internal peer review or any surrounding landowners. The adjacent parcel is 158 acres and it's unlikely that structures will be constructed adjacent to the shared property boundary. So the conclusion is on page 39 of the agenda. And that is staff are recommending approval of the variance, approval for four existing buildings with one requiring a variance, subject to the conditions as noted. And the standard response options for MPC is on page 41. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you Suzanne. MPC's wishes?
I'll move the recommendation that Municipal Planning Commission approved DP 2022-124 for four existing buildings with one requiring a variance, subject to the conditions noted in the package.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion, I'll call the vote. All in favor? That is passed. We will move on to DP 2022-140.
This application is for an accessory dwelling. Location plan is on page 52 of the agenda package. It is, it's about a quarter mile south of Eagle Lake. Circulation map's on the same page. We circulated to one mile. We didn't receive any responses, no concerns from our internal circulation and it wasn't circulated to agencies. On page 53, we have the site plan and an aerial photo. So the proposal is to construct a 621 square foot second residence on a seven acre parcel. The property has an existing 1,236 square foot residence, which will become the primary dwelling. The proposal meets all the setbacks and provisions of the land use bylaw for an accessory dwelling and no variances have been requested. Some considerations, we can look at the photos of the proposed residence and the primary dwelling on page 55. The application is a discretionary use in the country residential district. It meets the MDP and the ASP policies and objectives as it is within the Eagle Lake ASP. The dwelling fits the context of the area, which is agricultural and residential and no concerns were raised from internal peer review or surrounding landowners. So the conclusion is that on page 46, staff have recommended approval of this application for the dwelling accessory with the conditions as noted. And the standard three options are on page 50 for MPC to consider. Please let me know if you have questions.
Thank you Suzanne. MPC's wishes?
I'll move that Municipal Planning Commission approved DP 2022-140 for a dwelling accessory, subject to the conditions outlined in the package.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion, I'll call the vote. All in favor? That is passed. We will move to DP 2022-147.
This application is for a variance for a farm building, a chicken coop. The location plan is on page 60 of the agenda package, along with the circulation map. We circulated to landowners within a mile with no responses received. The parcel is just on the border of Sisika and it is west of Namaika Lake, east of Glee Shun, excuse me. So we did circulate to Sisika Nation. We didn't receive any responses. And internal staff had no concerns. We didn't receive any responses from adjacent landowners. So we have an aerial photo and the RPR on page 61. A compliance was requested. The review identified this 35 square foot chicken coop, which did not meet the setback from a property line. The coop is located 1.94 meters from the property line and their required setback is 3.05. So that variance is 36.4%. The neighboring parcel of land, the gin coop, is a 69 acre ag parcel, which does not have any structures near the shared property line. So typically this would not require a DP because it's less than 100 square feet, but because it doesn't meet the setback, a DP is required. So we have a photo of the chicken coop on page 62. The proposal meets the criteria in the LUB regarding variances. There were no objections from the internal review or circulation and the adjacent parcel is 69 acres and unlikely any structures will be constructed and they would need to be 3.05 meters away as well. So the recommendation on pages 56 and 57 is that MPC approve the variance for the farm building and subject to the conditions as noted. And the standard options are on page 58. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. MPC's wishes? Yes, Commissioner bigger.
I'll move that Municipal Planning Commission approved DP 2022-147 for an existing farm building for a variance, subject to the following conditions, 1 through 4.
Thank you. Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? That is passed. We move on to subdivision applications, SD 2022-010.
Good morning, committee members. Stephen Coates presenting on behalf of administration. Item 2022-010 is a subdivision proposal to create two five acre parcels with an 8.20 acre remainder. Lands are located within Origin Business Park, approximately six kilometers northwest of the hamlet of Cheadle and just southeast of the intersection of Ranger 270 and Highway Subject lands are within the West Highway 1 area structure plan and they are designated industrial general district. Purpose of the application, it's rather a large site. The owner intends to make three smaller parcels in order to facilitate the development of them. Apparently it's difficult to sell them on this larger size. So the smaller size is hoped they'll actually be able to have some industrial development take place on these sites. In terms of the technical matters, obviously this is part of the larger overall subdivision, so many of those have been accounted for. For water and wastewater servicing, currently it's not onsite, that will be provided through pump and haul system. That will be confirmed at the development permit stage. Municipal reserves were previously provided, so they're not required at this point. The only matter kind of just to note, not really of concern with stormwater management, right now, the overall system has some public utility lots throughout the area. They're not all fully constructed, so not all of the runoff will be able to be accommodated until that happens. So in the meantime, again, not concerned right now, but if these sites are developed, they'll have to accommodate their stormwater onsite until the overall system is completed. And then the other final item is in terms of access. So currently there's one approach to Lot 2, to Durham Road to the north. Lots 3 and lots 1 don't have approaches currently, so those are required as a condition. Lot 3 will be to Durham Road to the north. Lot 1 has the option to do Durham Road to the north or Spelt Street to the east. So the conditions, as I mentioned, the approaches as well as the standard typical ones, the planet survey, paying the taxes and the subdivision endorsement. We are of course recommending approval in accordance with those conditions. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions, should you have any.
Thank you Stephen. MPC's wishes?
I do have a question. I don't know if it has to do directly with this subdivision application, but Alberta Transportation has indicated that we should be considering the intersections off of Highway 1 as we further develop this area. Is that something we're looking at now or do, we must know what's going to happen? Any little?
Through the chair, yes. So there is in this area at development, there's a transportation offsite levy that's intended for that. Obviously, the overall idea for AT is to not have any at-grade intersections in this area, but they don't have the full functional study of how that's going to work yet. It's kind of out there. That's what they're working towards. So we are aware of that, our road ops group is aware of that as well. So something we're kind of keeping an eye on, but obviously with the funding of everything, it's difficult to put it on any one of these. So that's why we have the levy and hopefully with provincial funding, that'll be sorted out.
So they don't have a plan of where they're going to close intersections and have other intersections?
They do have a rough plan. I think it's closing most of these. And then I think it was, it's either 264 or 2, I think 264, 263 having an interchange. But again, that's pretty conceptual at this point.
Commissioner Clausen.
I can speak to that briefly because I was on Calgary Metrology Board and all the highway studies that I saw were mostly around Aergy Calgary for big interchanges and stuff. And they've probably got a backlog of 30 years worth of work.
Okay. This is way down the line.
This will be, unfortunately, it takes a long time for that. I remember when Highway 9 was a level crossing and it took a couple fatalities before it actually happened.
No, I can see definitely that there's other higher priority areas closer around Chestamere, I'd say.
24 is getting really bad today.
So this is much, much further down the line. Okay. I'm just curious. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Link.
Just to add to what Commissioner Clausen said, I do think this is a place for advocacy. So I was hoping we could add it to like a future council agenda. I do think that we will need to advocate for some expedited focus just on an interchange at that, in that area due to the development pressures and future development. So with that, we can take that to council and address it there for sure. Definitely some work that we need to do there.
Commissioner Kestner.
We've approached Alberta Transportation on this subject before. Keep allowing one or two. If we were to come in with 50, they would say no because of, they'll say put in an overpass, right? So this overpass would be put in for future development. The government, Wheatland County are hesitant to fund for development coming in. It would be up to the developers to put in the overpass. So I'm thinking maybe it could be added to a committee in the whole, should we be taking looking at, we're going to have to put an overpass in sooner and later. Are we going to wait 50 years? Are we going to require, put in the overpass and collect a levy for it or how are we going to fund? Otherwise, it's just going to one or two and eventually they'll say no and out this. So I think we have to plan for this, plan for the developers to. I know 24, we were to take it over, but there's development at the end and hopefully they'll keep it because of the pressures on the road. Those developments service more than Wheatland County. So I think it deserves a conversation because one day it's just going to say, no, that's it. You've hit your limit. You're not doing anything about it. But if we want one, maybe we have to start planning.
Good discussion. You have something to say, Commissioner Clausen?
I was going to move the recommendation that Municipal Planning Commission approved subdivision application, SD 2022-010, is subject to the following conditions presented, which is 1 through 4.
Thank you, Commissioner Clausen. Any more discussion? If there's no more discussion, I'll call the vote. All in favor? That passes. That handles, that takes care of everything. I will adjourn. No, sorry, Commissioner Kestner.
I recommend that we discuss this overpass or this road conditions for future continuity of the whole. Discuss this.
Direct administration to put this onto a committee of the whole agenda? We need to pass a motion for that.
I don't think that we need to, just given the, it's a big grade for me with MPC directing for council.
We can grade class council.
Yeah. And I know, like I know this is at the top of planning's mind due to some current potential applications that our, that our administration has been working with potential developers on. So there is conversations that are happening, conversations with the province that is currently happening.
Administration have enough direction that we don't have to?
Based on my conversations with administration, I believe this will be coming to council shortly.
Perfect.
And there's no issue doing, I mean, we do have comments from AT, so like Commissioner Kestner's comments totally make sense. So if MPC wants to do a motion, there's no harm either just to address that.
I'll do a motion. Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion in front of us about directing administration to put this onto the agenda of, or directing, asking council to put this on a committee of the whole?
I guess my reason for it is we're discussing servicing out there and of course all that costs money, right? So what's the point of servicing if we can't have access? It's a total package type deal. We've been kind of not mentioning it. I think we have to.
Okay, perfect.
In that context, for sure.
Do we have the outline of what the, are we good with that? So I will call the vote. All in favor? That passes. Any other business to be performed here? No? I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.